7:30. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for Gloria Dalulu Sorsy, a retired computer TA in the district?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.01 Superintendent's Report, Dr. Bonk.
Thank you, President Johnson, members of the Board of Education, and members of the Wappinger Central School District Learning Community. It's hard to believe that we are almost near the end of October. As I get older, I think time goes faster. Would you concur, Board?
I'm sorry.
There are a number of announcements that I would like to make. I would like to recognize our principals as its National School Principals Month. I think there's a School Principals Week that comes later in the year, but I thought it was very, very important to mention. We are very proud of our administrators and the work that they do every day at our 15 schools. So, Board, could we give our administrators, our school principals, a round of applause, please, for all their efforts? Thank you very much for your leadership. We've had a plethora of activities over the past couple of weeks. We've had homecomings, we've had athletic events, we're going to have some music concerts coming up, it's the Halloween season for trunk or treat, and school spirit remains at an all-time high. And I was very fortunate this past Friday, I had an opportunity to attend the Pinkout for girls volleyball between John Jay and Roy C. Ketchum, and I had an opportunity to go watch the undefeated John Jay Patriots defeat Mamaroneck in Mamaroneck. It was a battle of the, yes, round of applause, it was a battle of the undefeateds. It was quite a game. It was a packed house, needless to say. We do have bleachers for our visitors. Unfortunately, at Mamaroneck, there is a hill of dirt and grass, and bring your own chairs, as their stands were packed with Mamaroneck fans. So, I want to thank all of the people from John Jay who traveled down and attended. Jay was up at 1.14 to nothing, Mamaroneck came back and tied the score, it went into overtime, and John Jay won on their possession. Unfortunately, Ketchum also played an overtime game and unfortunately came out on the short end of the stick, but they also have had a great year. So, I would say to our community, if you have an opportunity to attend those events, I know within a couple of weeks, we have Mask in Mime here at RCK that are going to have a drama performance. We've got Triumph, which is our recognized music department coming up in a couple of weeks, so please take a look at the district calendar. What's that?
Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. I wasn't certain, but apparently people up here are, so it is Wednesday. Can we confirm that it's Wednesday? Okay, so that will be next Wednesday, no, this Wednesday evening. Hold on, let's go to the videotape.
District calendar, right there, Wednesday.
I can confirm it is this Wednesday. Can we confirm the time? Is it 7 o'clock?
7:00.
Wednesday, 7:00, and it is at Roy C. Ketchum High School, and that...
Yes, because he's giving the Pumpkin Pops at John Jay. Halloween Haunt is Tuesday, Ketchum's Monday.
So, let me ask you, let me say this, please, please look at the district calendar, as I said, a plethora of events. We appreciate your support. Thank you for supporting our district, and thank you for supporting our students. And I believe that's all I have, unless anyone has any other additional clarifications. Thank you very much.
We'll get back to you on all those other events. 4.01 Public Comment on Agenda Items Only. As There Is None. 4.02 Community Announcements Received by the Board of Education. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say, Ms. Kellon?
Thank you. Today was the first induction into the Science Honor Society at Roy C. Ketchum. It's just starting up, the Science Honor Society, and over 30 students were inducted. Thirty-three, exactly.
In conjunction with, I think we should...
Put your mic on.
In conjunction, we should thank the two teachers, the advisors, who actually organized all this event. I mean, it's quite an accomplishment, that's the very first one. So, I'd like to have Ms. Glancy and Mr. Bautista.
Thank you. Does it, Ms. Miggitts?
Okay, apologizing, I'm going to mention a few things that Dr. Bonk has already touched on. The John Jay football game on Friday night solidified the league championship for the John Jay football team.
Which means we have home advantage.
Yes. And the Pinkout volleyball game at Ketchum, John Jay won in five sets, or four sets, and that gave John Jay the volleyball league championship for this season. On Sunday, the John Jay cheerleading squad hosted their annual Patriot Palooza cheerleading competition. And just to have everything straight, it was already in my report. If people are confused, if you'd like to hear some good Halloween-themed music, you can go to Roy C. Ketchum tomorrow night at 7:00 PM for the Halloween Haunt, or you can go to John Jay High School at 7:00 PM on Wednesday for the Pumpkin Pops.
Thank you.
Can you clarify that one more time, please? Thank you.
And Triumph will be at Roy C. Ketchum on Wednesday. Pumpkin Pops will be on Wednesday.
6:00 PM.
And 6:00 PM for Triumph. We'll be emailing Mr. Lumia the correct times later. I also was at the initial science induction for the Honor Society at Roy C. Ketchum. It was an honor. Mr. Bautista and Ms. Glancy did an amazing job, along with the students. It was actually student-requested to start that Honor Society, so kudos to those two young people that went to their instructors to get that started. Also, this week, three of the board members here will be traveling to the New York State School Boards Association Convention, along with Dr. Bonk, and we hope to learn all kinds of fun information on what we can bring back to you. That being said, 4.03 Committee Reports, Capital Improvement, Trustee Miggitts?
Since our last meeting, the Capital Improvement Committee has met twice, on October 2nd and October 16th. Present for both meetings were committee members Dr. Bonk, Mr. Loquima, Marie Johnson, Corinne Mondasando, and myself, as well as community members Ellen Mead, Eddie Slowshower, and Stephen Schucott. Mrs. Kelland was also in attendance at the October 16th meeting. One of the issues that we discussed is the problem that we've been having with the fire alarms going off, sometimes with no real cause. And so, Dr. Bonk invited Day Automation to come and meet with us, and they are going to take a look at our system and how it's functioning, and give us a recommendation on ways that they can help us improve the fire alarm system. In terms of the 2023 capital projects update, Evans Elementary, the side panel has been removed and the contractor was waiting on breakers for the kitchen. Oak Grove Elementary projects have been completed.
The footrests.
Yes, the hood was raised, for those who were concerned on board tours about how low-hanging it was. Vassar Road Elementary, the transformer switchover will be done in the spring. This is something that was covered at both of our meetings. The main lobby bathrooms at Ketchum are still behind schedule. There was a miscommunication between the contractor and the subcontractor, and so we are hoping to have everything operational there in time for the, yes, for the fall play. The art and ceramic rooms, they were down to punch list items. The Home &amp; Careers Room at WAP Jr., we expressed concern about some of the new appliances not being hooked up and operational. That has now been taken care of. Van Wyck Jr. High School, we met with Principal Castro to talk about plans for the new sound system, and Mr. Castro has decided that he wants to keep the basics of their current sound system, but there are some other upgrades that he wants made in the auditorium, in the booth area. The field sound systems at Ketchum and John Jay, there are still a few issues that need to be straightened out there, and the committee will be taking further action there. As far as the 2025 capital projects, we met with the coaches and the athletic directors and are close to settling on the final look for the two new turf fields at the schools and the orientation of the softball fields. Also, at Ketchum, we are close to making a final decision on where the multi-use field will be and where the tennis courts will be. They've gone back and forth, flip-flopping in our discussion recently. The, I think we have finally come to the end of our discussion on the John Jay press box, and we'll be moving ahead with submitting those plans to Albany. We also discussed the large group instruction room renovations. There was a committee that met after the Capitol Committee meeting, and so that committee will be bringing details of that discussion to the Capitol Committee at our next meeting on October 30th. We also talked about the need for having a construction manager for the summer projects that will be set up for next summer. And we are continuing to discuss the traffic flow situation at Myers Corners Elementary School.
Thank you. Dr. Bonk, Strategic Planning.
Thank you, President Johnson. Very, very proud to be involved in the strategic planning, as we continue to focus on today and we plan for tomorrow. When I took this job about five years ago, one of the things that I indicated that was a priority for me was our systems, and our systems development, implementation, and making sure that we're providing the necessary programs and services to all of our students in every facet of what we do, from making sure that we get our kids to school safe, making sure that they're in a safe environment during the day, making sure that they have the best curriculum possible, make sure that they're engaged in learning, that we're developing them socially, academically, and emotionally, and that we provide opportunities for them to be successful. And to this point, we're on our way to doing that, but there still is much more work to be done. We've come back from a pandemic. It's taken a little longer than I think most people would have hoped, but we are moving in the, we continue to move in the right direction, and now it's up to us, and when I say "us", I mean each and every one of us. That's the Board of Education, that's the administration, that's every stakeholder in our community, to develop our goals and our objectives as a school district for the next five-plus years. What is it that we want to see our students and our families experience? What is a Wappinger Central School District educational experience, and what does it consist of? The last time this strategic plan was revised was prior to COVID, back in 2019. We are in the process this year of getting a committee together, and we've already done that. We've had two meetings with our core committee, and we are in the process of finalizing a calendar, as well as developing supplemental committees that will be responsible for the overall goals and objectives that are determined by the Strategic Planning Committee, and I can assure you that they will involve every aspect of what we expect here in the Wappinger Central School District. And again, when I say "we," I refer to all of us. So, that process is well underway. We have our third meeting coming up within a couple of weeks. I would hope and expect that once we get through the holidays and we get into January, we're able to begin moving forward and having some of those meetings and having some of that dialogue. And it would be my hope that as we get to the end of the school year, or at least through the summer, we have a pretty good blueprint as to what we, as a community, want to see happen for our students here in the Wappinger Central School District. So, the conversation that we've had to this point has been very robust, it has been very deliberate, it has been very Wappingerized, and I think that that's important as we move forward, that we need to, again, we need to look at what we need as a community, and our community's needs and wants and desires may be different than others. And that's where we're going to need our community to provide their input and their thoughts. So, not only will individuals have an opportunity to do that as part of committee, but there also will be surveys that will be developed, and they will be more targeted. They're not going to be vague, they're going to give an opportunity for people to really, really indicate exactly what role they believe that our school district should play today, and what is our chief responsibility as a school district? I think if you ask that question, you may get some differing answers, which I think would be the right answer, because I think, in this day and age, we have a multitude of goals and objectives that we want to achieve as a school district, that not only measure a student's academic competence, but also measures their abilities and their skills as a whole child in preparing them for life after they leave this school district and go on in whatever their future endeavors may be. And with that, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Policy Chairperson, Ms. Kellon.
Yes, the Policy Committee met at the beginning of the month with Darren Loquima, the Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Technology, board members Marie Johnson, Cheryl Miggitts, John Lumia, and myself, and the district clerk, Alberta Pedro. We, as I said last time about the Policy Committee, we addressed issues of the duties of the administration and of the board, and pretty much, they remained the same with some changes in terminology. We were told by our attorneys that goals were an inappropriate thing to put in policy. They weren't really goals, we had misnamed them, so we changed it to guiding principles, because each section of the policy manual has a section, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, et cetera, that sets out the general philosophy of the Wappinger School District. And there were some suggestions made by Mr. Morgan, which we incorporated into our changes.
Thank you, Ms. Kellon. Next is Mr. Morgan, who chairs our Audit Committee.
Thank you, President Johnson. At our most recent meeting, which was attended by committee members Trustee Lumia, Trustee Capilari, President Johnson, ex-officio, and myself, along with the district clerk, Alberta Pedro, and our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Kristin Dainty, we met with Mr. Smith and voted as a committee to recommend the final audit report, which, based on the timing of this report, was adopted or approved by the board at our most recent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Dainty is not here, so we will do wellness at the next meeting. District-wide safety, Mr. Loquima.
Thank you and good evening. Yes, we met, the District-wide Safety Committee meeting was held last Thursday. In attendance was Trustee Capilari, sorry, Trustee Lumia, and President Johnson were in attendance. We talked primarily about the DESHA law and the updates needed for our district-wide safety plan for cardiac arrest and dealing with individuals who may be experiencing cardiac arrest on our property. We talked about the challenges of having to train staff to be available for before and after-school events, and we talked about, you know, the need to ensure that there's a plan in place for our community-based organizations to be aware of what to do in case of a cardiac emergency while on school grounds. So, and we also talked about the expansion of our SRO program, the addition of SROs at Gayhead Elementary and Myers Corners Elementary, and our continued work and partnerships with our municipalities to try and expand to other schools as well, but also, you know, talked about how all the schools have additional police presence throughout the day as compared to previous years. And then finally, excuse me, and then finally, we spoke about, very briefly, whether the committee wanted to move forward on last year's recommendation to continue to explore using Smart Schools Bond Act money for license plate reading cameras at all the other schools, which the committee affirmed that they did, and so we'll continue that work in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loquima. Next is the BOCES report, Mr. McFarland.
So, as you may be aware, Dutchess County BOCES is also going through a strategic planning process, which I'm glad to be part of, and looking for the next five years' progression. We've also hired a full-time security agency to make sure that all our students and staff and faculty are safe, and, you know, it's a pretty big campus and we only have one SRO, so the thought was bring in a full-time security company and let them manage the security end of it. So, so far, it's been working out very well. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McFarland. And last is Ms. Kellon on the New York State School Boards Association Convention Resolutions.
Yes. Last Thursday, I attended the business meeting of the New York State School Boards Association as your representative, and I'm happy to say this year, it was only six hours instead of eight hours, without any breaks. The resolutions, first of all, all the bylaws amendments were rejected since they didn't really fit in legally with the functioning of the School Board Association. Most, everybody agreed on that. The first seven resolutions were sunsetting, so they were kept their positions that New York State School Boards Association has had for many years. Proposition 8 was rejected. That would have reduced the required number of lockdown drills, and we felt that the safety of our students is so important that the time spent in drills is, should be kept as it is. They, we also supported legislation that would allow the creation of regional high schools for very small districts that don't want to give up an independent district altogether so that they could keep their own identity in elementary and middle school, but have regional high schools so that they would have more opportunities. Interestingly, there are only three regional high schools and central high school districts in New York State. They're all on Long Island. I went to one of them, and they were started when that area was more sparsely populated, but they've kept them because they found it very successful. We supported resolutions to, for the state to provide financing for us to create air conditioning in our schools, since we're now required, as we should, to remove the children if it's unbearably hot, but it's very difficult to alleviate the situation with your older buildings. And we also supported the, the, let's see, a lot of them are technical and, you know, and they're not really of interest. The, we reported, supported reinstatement of permitting whole milk in the lunch menus, since some children don't drink skim milk, and they just don't drink any milk at all. So, that we felt was useful, and we were very enthusiastic for requiring recess, grades K through 6, throughout the New York State. Wappinger does have recess every day, and I think most districts do, but we felt it should be a requirement. We also, these are sort of technical ones that are not of interest to the public, but Oh, and also, another thing for the whole child, besides recess, to support requiring financial literacy throughout the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kellon. This is 4.4 Student Board Members. Emma, let's start with you this time.
Okay, so, as you guys know, we had homecoming. We had the game which we lost, third.
Barely lost it. It was overtime. You guys fought hard.
We had homecoming, which was a blast. I personally had fun, and our field hockey team qualified for Sectionals, and they won on last Tuesday.
Awesome. Yes, I forgot about field hockey qualifying for Sectionals. Ms. Winter, what is going on over at John Jay this week?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Again, it's an absolute honor to be here. Homecoming week was an absolute blast, school spirit was at an all-time high, the dance was not only incredibly fun, but also achieved its goal in being incredibly safe, which I know is something that everyone on this board cares very deeply about. You know, I would say that John Jay probably has one of the best football teams in the area, given that we are league champions in not only football, but also volleyball. So, you know, that could not have been possible without the, you know, grueling, hard work and effort of all our athletic staff and all the players themselves, who during the summer were putting in seven, eight, nine-hour days. So, you know, working hard and showing up truly shows that not only do we have the, you know, talent, but we also have the physical skill and the hard-working and the perseverance this school district really likes to hammer home. Our drama club, Precenium, is working towards a performance of Merrily. Our drama club, Precinnium, is working towards a performance of Merrily We Roll Along, which should be showing in about mid-November. That will be at the Rogers Heavens Performance Hall, which is in John Jay. Let me look at what else I have here. There is a fundraiser that is taking place at John Jay called Mustaches for Kids, which you vote, if you pay money, you can vote for whatever teacher you may like to have a silly mustache for the week. And this is being done for the Division of the Westchester Medical Center, the Maria Ferrari Toadments Hospital. I think this is, for one, an incredibly important cause, and I think it's so great that, you know, our school district is actively working towards donating to these organizations. I just think it's so, so important and so, so great that we're taking the initiative in doing that. And, you know, ladies and gentlemen, the most frightening season is upon us, not Halloween, but college application season. But I'm very, very happy to report that for John Jay, at the very least, our counselors have provided us with ample resources and support to give, you know, every single student, no matter what they're planning on pursuing after high school, an equal and great, very, very high chance of success. So, you know, our counseling staff is actually excellent, and I just really need to emphasize that because, you know, the amount of last-minute stuff I've had to come to them, panicking, and, you know, just the grace and the experience by which they handle everything has been truly a miracle to see. So, that's everything. I wrap it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was a couple things that I forgot to mention before. Royce Ketchum, during their home, just before their Homecoming game, they had their Hall of Fame induction. And I believe this Friday will be the Hall of Fame induction over at John Jay. This Saturday will be the Trunkert Tree at Royce Ketchum with the Comic-Con. And also, I believe there, I think there's a car show as well. John Jay will have their car show at the beginning of the month before our next meeting. And they are also going to have their large craft fair, which is going to help support their PTA. Oh, I missed.
And I forgot to mention before, I was invited by the John Jay Baseball Booster Club to an event that they're having Thursday that unfortunately I won't be able to attend because I'll be in the city. But for any of you who would like to support our veterans or the John Jay baseball team, they are having an inner-squad scrimmage over at the Recreation Center in Hopewell. And they are going to, and this is a service project, to benefit the veterans.
Mr. Morgan?
Point of information, the Wapinjor Central School District actually has an Athletics Hall of Fame. It's the Thomas McCready Hall of Fame, named after a longtime Director of Physical Education and Athletics, I believe in the 60s and early 70s. But the current Athletics Department has decided that there should be separate induction ceremonies reflective of each of the high schools, but it's actually one District Hall of Fame.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that for me. That being said, 5.01, Consent Agenda. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Mr. McFarland?
Yes, I'd like to remove 5.03, number four.
Thank you. Trustee Miggitts?
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following Consent Agenda items as stated. 5.02, 5.03, with the exception of item number four. 5.04, 5.05, 5.06, 5.07, 5.08, 5.09, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, and 5.13.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. Capilari. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve item number 5.03, number four.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Ms. Kellen. All those in favor? Mr. Capilari, Mr. Morgan, Ms. Mondesando, Mrs. Johnson, Ms. Miggitts, Mr. Odoms, Ms. Kellen. All those abstaining? Mr. Lumia and Mr. McFarland. Mr. Dr. Bonk, do you have an announcement that you would like to make?
I certainly do. Yes, I do. I do.
I believe we do have an announcement.
I'd just like to clarify once again for everyone that's either out in the audience or watching this, please look at the district calendar to see the myriad of events and make sure you have the right events, the right places, and the right times, because there's a lot going on. I am very, very pleased this evening that we have appointed a new Assistant Director of Facilities and Operations, and it's an individual who has been with the district for quite some time. We appreciate the work that this individual has done to this point and the work that they will be doing as we continue to spruce up the district and fix items that need to be fixed, some of them that are original to the buildings when they were first opened. In thanking and welcoming Mr. Asher, I also want to thank all of our Facilities and Operations staff for the work that they continue to do every day. And that is from the head custodians, to the custodians, to everybody involved in maintenance, to facilities, to grounds, to mechanics, you name it. They have worked diligently to make sure that this district continues to operate optimally. And it is not, it does not go unheeded. The work that has been done has been absolutely phenomenal. And because of the work that's been done with what we have, I believe it's inspired people to support more and new things. Because people see the efforts that are given and the work that is being done, and it's about time to make some of these repairs. We've been doing this probably for the last five to seven years. We're going to continue to even do more of it. And with that, Mr. Asher, welcome to your new position as Assistant Director, Facilities and Options. Welcome and congratulations. Thank you, Dan.
Not to mention, we really did need the extra help. We've got this $153 million project plus 15 schools. It's a lot to take on.
I thought it was 156 million.
No, you keep upping it, but we only approved 153.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Sorry. It might be. You never know.
Thanks, Trustee Lumia.
That being said, six point, and congratulations, Mr. Asher. 6.01, Acceptance of the 2025-2026 New York State Annual Fire Safety Inspection Report.
Whereas a New York State Code Enforcement Officer from Bruce Bingham &amp; Associates has completed the 2025-2026 New York State Annual Fire Safety Inspections of the Wapinjor Central School District's buildings on August 19, 2025. And whereas Bruce Bingham &amp; Associates has identified non-conformance items in some of the district's buildings, and whereas the Wapinjor Central School District immediately addressed these items, and there are no outstanding non-conformance items at this time, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby accepts the Wapinjor Central School District Fire Safety Inspection Report and directs the District Clerk to publish the required notice of report availability in its official newspapers pursuant to Education Law Section 807-A, 5B, and C.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. Odoms. Any discussion? Mr. Morgan?
I think it's noteworthy that on the report, while the motion does read that some non-conformance items in some of the district buildings were noted, 19 different and distinct district buildings had absolutely no citations. The other important item to note before I anticipate the approval of this motion is that everything was addressed well in advance of students reporting to school. And many of the items were extremely easy fixes, nothing structural, you know, maybe books being stacked in front of an exit window or something like that that just needed to be moved.
Yeah, most of that was probably done in the middle of them getting the buildings ready, so they were moving stuff around, and it just so happened, a bad day. All those in favor? Unanimous? 6.02, Approval to Attend the Annual Regional Dinner.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following Board Members to attend the 49th Annual Regional Dinner for Board Members and Superintendents, the uniquely human advantage, preparing today's students for success in the age of AI on Thursday, November 13, 2025, at Tilly Foster Farm in Brewster, New York, at a cost of $80 per person and any reimbursed mileage travel per Board policy.
Do I have a motion? Oh, you have to read them all?
Peggy Kellen, Marie Johnson, Cheryl Miggitts, John S. Morgan, Virgil Capilari, and if there are any others.
Mr. Lumia would like to also be added to that, to John Lumia. Anyone else?
It's spelled A-R.
Nobody else? Do I have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. McFarland. Any discussion? None. All those in favor? Unanimous? 6.03, Second Reading and Adoption of Policies.
Resolve that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District hereby approves the second reading of and adopts the following policies based on the first reading by the Board and the recommendation of the Policy Committee as stated.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. Odoms. Discussion. I'd like to make, move to amend policy 3,000, 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, and 9,000 to insert the following as an additional bullet or numbered item in each of those policies. This goes back to, so, the district, department, and school-building goals will incorporate the annual approved Board Goals as short-term priorities to the extent possible. Do I have a motion for that amendment? Ms. Miggitts, second. Ms. Kellen. Discussion on the amendments only. Now, Mr. Morgan had brought up a couple of questions, and this is the best way to insert it into those to address all of his concerns, and it doesn't change anything. Yes, Mr. Odoms?
I was just saying, I know the, in the first approval, we had made amendments. Why are we including those?
So, we took out the word "goals" in so many areas, but we also took it out, there are still some areas where "goal" is a wording. So this is just to say that these, and the new wording was, I'm trying to remember, guiding principles, will help us with the actual school-building goals, because school buildings still have goals, and the Board still makes their Board Goals and the guiding principles. So this is just to kind of complete that whole circle.
So we can't have "goals" included in this?
We took out "goals" in the, in those, we took the word "goals" out in all of those for that policy.
Yes.
And we put guiding principles, but this statement states that the school buildings still have goals, and that the Board still have a goal. Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think that the Policy Committee deserves thanks for their work. The policies for a very long period of time have talked about goals, and have had four or five things in each of those respective goal policies that we're speaking about. But really, goals are changing over the course of time. So we've identified these more timeless concepts as guiding principles, which I think we all fully support. And then also, the amendment that you're offering then allows for the incorporation of those shorter-term priorities that are set from year to year, to work alongside, in the short term, the more timeless guiding principles. I think it's work well done. Thank you for the time and effort for all the members of the Policy Committee.
Yes, thank you. So can I get a vote on the, to do the amendment as proposed? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now we need to vote on the policies as amended and other policies. So do I have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Ms. Kellen. All in favor? Unanimous. 7.01, does any Board Member have any additional agenda items that they need to discuss? Seeing none. 8.01, comments from the public? No comments from the public. 9.01?
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby adjourn the October 20, 2025 Board of Education meeting. The time is 8:16.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Odoms. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.